Jason, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask if there are any public comments. Okay, I need an approval, a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Say.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the June 1st, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now I would like to turn it over to Mr. Beasley for the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ray. Just a few things tonight. First on my agenda, we talked a bit about bus drivers, what we can do to support bus drivers, what we can do to recruit drivers, and so Mr. Carter has been working on that. So I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Carter, let him speak on that information.
Okay, we have obviously a shortage of bus drivers, and so it's a state-wide problem, and it's a real problem for us here. We have a good solid team, but we don't have very many substitutes. One of the things that we're trying to create is an incentive program for them to come to work, so we don't need the substitutes as much, and then try to find some incentive for staff members to get a bonus if they complete so many trips to help out the principals and transportation during the school year. For example, during the school day, my person might go up there and teach, if they got their bus license, the principal calls them and says, "Look, I got nobody driving this bus afternoon, can you help me out?" If they did that and they got in 10 trips, they'd get a $400 bonus. We also have in here a signing bonus of $500 for anybody that comes on and agrees to drive for us, and then they complete 20 trips for us.
They have to complete 20 trips before they get the bonus?
Yes, yes. And we know, you know, CDLs, some people would use that pathway to gain access to a CDL to take a higher-paid job, so like I said, there's got to be some, we've got to reap something from it and got to have something before they would get the bonus that they would have to complete. Right now, our bus driver pool is, our substitute bus driver pool is really low, and we're just trying to, this is nothing written in stone, this is something we've just tried to come up with as a starter to see what we can, what we can do. I know one of the things is about funding, you know, how are we gonna fund it? And I know we've talked about some different options locally, Mr. Bogler's going to approach. We have a meeting tomorrow with a guy that's given us a lot of direction on ESRA funds, on how we can use them, what we can use them for, so that's something that we could talk about in that meeting as well to try to come up with some options on how to, you know, generate some interest and get some drivers in here, because a lot of times, the other options that happen is we have to take custodians out of the building to drive the buses, and we can't get our buildings going because of their hours. So they got 40 hours a week, if we're using them 12 hours a week to drive a bus, then that's 12 hours they're not in the building. So, you know, we're, like I said, this is a, this is a starter, and we want to tweak it, but wanted to introduce it to you guys and see if we could come up with something to help this out.
Why such a big difference between the staff members and substitute drivers? Substitute drivers, 50 trips, 1,500, staff members, 30 trips, 2,000. Why is such a big difference there?
Well, one of the reasons would be that they're a lot more accessible, so if they are there...
Sure.
Yeah. The staff members are accessible, and if they're one that's gonna agree, and taking, if you took 30 trips after you had taught the full day and then did that in the afternoon or the morning, and use a staff member that a principal could count on and call on and make say, "Look, I need you." You know, the substitutes, we may have to call in, they may not be able to get there. It would, and like I said, that's something we can adjust, but we were just thinking about how accessible they would be, and like I said, that would be a lot.
How many staff have got the bus licenses, do you know?
At the high school?
Well, any school?
Yes. There's not many. The high schools probably got the most. I know like at Pine Creek, right now, we have one.
Are they in which more for the $500 signing bonus?
No.
Maybe you ought to think about that.
Well, are they, for, where it says staff members, I mean, so you already have a staff member that's driving, so they get this?
What we would say is that if the staff, we don't have a staff member driving a regular route, but if...
Do you, Clay?
Bobby.
Bobby, yeah, he's full-time, yeah, he drives. Yeah, yeah, he does, that's right, he does. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if they, if they complete those, and like I said, this could be adjustable. This is something Mr. Johnson and I got together and tried to put some things down on what can we do to create some interest and get some people in here to get their license, so we got a little bigger, bigger pull to draw from.
Well, this has been a problem ever since they swapped letting high school kids drive a bus, you know, lips. Bus drivers has always been a problem.
Well, it's tough, because they gotta come, get up real early in the morning, they come, they work a couple hours, and then they're gone all day, and then they gotta come back in the afternoon, and, you know, it's just, it's hard, unless they got something, a flexible schedule, it's hard to get to.
And Mr. Waddell, I mean, he drives, he doesn't do much, he's got a B drive.
Right. So...
So really...
This is something you want to start doing.
Well, we would...
You don't need our approval for this?
We will, and like I said, we want to do a little more research on funding it, maybe come back to you next meeting and say, "This is how we would have to fund it, we can do this, we can do this, we can't do that," whatever, but, and like I said, wanted you guys to look at it, we got some ideas and some ways we could tweak it, and obviously, we would entertain us.
So really, the $500 bonus, 20 trips is really two weeks?
Well, now, most of the time, if you're talking about this person, they would be a full-time driver, because we've got our full-time drivers. What we would be creating with this is someone to drive field trips and somebody to substitute.
Right.
So that would probably take them, it'd take them three, four months, you know, to get that. Because like I said...
Well, it might be.
Yeah, and that's the thing, you're gonna have to hump in there and drive, and if you're a staff member and you want this, you would have to go to that principal, say, "Anytime you got an opening, I'll be glad to drive" if you were gonna get to some of these, but I think it might, you know, like I said, the ones that are already doing it, like Mr. Waddell, then you're rewarding those people, because if you take the $13 a kids and you take the taxes out, and you take their retirement out, he, he getting about $5, $10 a day to do that.
But this is, this is good, because we need something, I think.
Yeah, I do too. Like I said, I'll get back with Mr. Johnson, and we'll take a look at it, and we'll look at the funding piece, and we'll come back and report again next month and see if we can close on that. So Beasley, you want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead, I'll number two, I'll start.
Okay, earthquake, construction, COVID updates, as far as COVID goes, I didn't write anything down, we've only got one employee that is quarantined and no positives, and there is part-time employees that are quarantined, so they'll be out for 14 days, otherwise, we don't have anything, staff-wise. Earthquake updates, stairs...
Can we back up just a minute, sir? What happens to a teacher that's quarantined with COVID? They're quarantined 14 days, is that what's paid?
Okay, so last year, we had a federal code that ran till March, that we could provide that paid with. We had a state code that ran till June the 15th, and it cut off. We got word this morning, the treasurers, or the financial people that was morning, and we had HR meetings this morning, they've extended the state code to pay for, if you get quarantined, you get full pay.
Okay. Is there any difference in vaccinated teacher and unvaccinated teacher, or are they treated differently?
According to the, according to the toolkit, and like, what we will do is we will refer to the Health Department anytime anything happens, okay? So according to the toolkit, at this point, if someone was around, if someone was exposed to a positive, and they were vaccinated, they would not be quarantined unless they showed symptoms.
Okay.
The unvaccinated would be quarantined to start with.
With pay?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, but there's, they're treated equally, so except for that condition?
Neither one's gonna lose any money.
Okay.
And what we would ask, what we would ask the teacher that was quarantined at home would be to zoom into their classroom, deliver the instruction, we would find coverage for them, that way, the kids would get the same instruction. If they were positive, we wouldn't ask them to do that.
Good to go.
Okay, so earthquake, stairs, Esparta complete, gym, Esparta complete, machinery wall at the high school just finished, concrete repair in front of the new gym, we had trip hazards there, that's complete, the handicap ramp access here to central office, the bleachers, the concrete is complete, and they're beginning installation of the steel on Monday. They plan, hope, play, parade, that it will be done by next Friday, which will be our first home game, which is Surry Central. If not, they promised we will have it by Grayson County the next week. We've got some plans that we can bring in some bleachers for Surry Central if we need to. We will be closing the track next week, we're gonna get some signs up down there this week, but it will be closed next week because they're gonna be moving the steel and can't have people going back and forth. So that, if you hear anything, that's the reason that's closed. The other piece of the construction, lighting at all the schools, 99% complete, the chiller at Esparta is installed and running, and the boiler at Esparta is installed, and they'll be firing it up in the fall as soon as they get the, the fuel tanks set. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Carter. Number three on our item there is our ESRA updates, and we want that, Mitch Bogler?
All right.
Step up and...
Sure, if you pull that up, I'll just, we'll stay in that order I had at CTE first, but we can, we can jump around later.
Sorry.
Oh, but that one, that is fine. Just skip on down to ESRA, stop at the fourth one. All right. Just wanted to give you a, a little update on ESRA spending and money and where everything is at the moment, and I know you've all heard about ESRA 1, ESRA 2, ESRA 3, and all this federal money that's coming in. Basically, ESRA 1, we received around $424,000 late spring 2020, and what they're telling us is you kind of have to spend that out before you get to 2 and 3, that's not 100% true. We tried to do that, and currently, we have approximately $125,000 left, and that is earmarked for some things. We haven't got to some of that spending yet. If you want to look at, the bulk of this has been used truthfully for personnel, staffing, remote staffing, when we have remote teachers, summer school substitutes, we had teachers go out with quarantines and stuff like that, that was, truthfully, the bulk of that money that has been spent was that. And then you also have custodial supplies, PPE, protective things, masks, things like that, and then instructional supplies, but the bulk of the spending so far has been personnel. Now, with what's left, the items that we're still looking at, we've got some stuff that needs to be spent on instructional supplies and materials for specific groups, CTE is one of those groups, special populations is one of those groups, we still have some custodial money that needs to be spent. We got some money, we may have to move some things around, because when we budgeted all this real quickly back in the day, basically, some of that we're not gonna have to use for those same things. So we may have to go and do some amending to get rid of that, so that's, that's kind of ESRA 1. About any question about ESRA 1 at all?
Yeah, we've got some things. We do have some things ordered that's been on backwards for a few months.
Uh, not with ESRA 1, I don't think, I think, to my knowledge.
I just think that the hands free, the work balance...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if that...
No, we got that. We got that, they fight it.
I think, I think we're good on all that with ESRA 1.
Okay.
So, yeah. Any questions on ESRA 1? All right, ESRA 2 and 3, and this is the bigger pot of money, ESRA 2 is a million something, I can't quite remember, then there's a whole lot more in the ESRA 3. Currently, no, we have no money spent out of those two pots for a couple reasons. One, like I said, you kind of have to use that ESRA 1 first before you get to 2 and 3, and they're tweaking things as they go. A lot of this is tied up because the state doesn't have a budget yet, to be honest. We're still being held up because of the state before we can do that, so no money has really been spent with that. And I'm gonna tell you, and with ESRA 1, they, there's still a lot of guidelines, but with ESRA 2 and 3, we've been told, you know, you know, when, when, I won't say yet, but when we get audited on this, we gotta really look at, did we follow that federal uniform guidance? And there's, as I say, there's hoops, there's flaming hoops, and then there's hoops hanging upside down on a, you know, one of those things that I forget the name, one of those things people swing on and jump from.
Trap pigs.
Trap pigs, yes, there's that one too. And it just depends on how much money you're spending. So under $10,000, it's a little less you gotta do, although they added something this time around talking about aggregate, so in other words, let's say you're buying a bunch of soap, and it's $500. Over the course of this time, if you end up spending $10,000 on soap, they're gonna back up and nail you if you didn't do everything the way they wanted it done. Then it's $10,000, it's 90, that ups it a little bit. What you gotta do as far as getting quotes and things like that, $90,000 budget, you gotta do formal bids, so there's a lot of hoops to jump through on the front end, so that on the back end, you won't get into trouble. Now, points of focus this year, and that's this school year, what's really been written into the plan to really focus on and spend some of this money on, HVAC improvements to improve air quality and reduce virus transmission, that's a big chunk of it. Professional development, coaching, training for teachers to assist in strategies to recover student learning loss, that's a big bulk of it. Technology updates to ensure teachers, students have access to adequate technology for blended learning, just in case, and we are gonna have some folks that are remote, so we've got to stay on top of that. And then they're making us go ahead and plan for summer school next year. So summer school spending, if needed for next year, is part of that budget as well. And that's kind of the bulk of the focus this year. Now, I will tell you, especially, again, jumping through these hoops and some of the things like technology, when we get to that point, that's gonna be one of those we'll probably have to do bids on, so that's gonna slow everything down, plus you can't get technology anyway, so if we start that process tomorrow, I would be surprised if we have computers rolling here till after Christmas. So that's just, it is kind of what it is, so... But I just wanted to give you a little update on that and talk to you a little bit about that guidance, because that's gonna be, like I said, a lot of hoops, and flaming hoops and every other kind of thing to deal with. Mr. Carter spoke about it, a fellow that's coming tomorrow, James Pop's coming tomorrow, he's our region's federal guidance, I really don't know what officially his title is. What's his title, Cindy?
Program Administrator.
Program Administrator, there you go. He's moving up though, so he's only here for a little while, he's got another job, but we're gonna ask him a whole lot of questions tomorrow about this and make sure that we are doing what we need to do. I'll just tell you, I've been just going through lots and lots of this stuff, and I've had this experience with gear, and a little bit with CTE, the biggest problem is they'll tell you all these things you've gotta do, but then they won't really tell you how to do it. And a lot of times, there's forms they want you to have, but they don't really have that form for you. So it's a little complicated, but we'll get through it. If I told Cindy today, it'll be okay, it'll be all right at the end of the day, so that's kind of the ESRA update. Questions?
So we even talk about technology and getting computers in, like, how, I mean, where are we behind on, because we...
They've been, they've been doing their normal updates, you know, what they normally do with regular technology money?
Yeah.
Where this is, they're talking about basically refreshing devices, it's a good opportunity to get more Chromebooks and other devices that you need, and because that number's gonna be so large, you're gonna have to do, you know, you're gonna have to put it out for proposals and bids and all that stuff, and it's, it gets pretty complicated.
I'm pretty sure Wes at all has put the RFP out.
Okay, has he started that?
Yeah, and I know he's, I know he's got three bids already on everything that's been on there.
Bids.
So we're just waiting for that RFP.
It takes, it's a process, and you gotta put stuff in the paper, and it's a several-week process just to get to the point where you can make the decision which one to go with, so, yeah. And even, like, I've been working on a couple things that are more, that are, that don't meet that requirement, and it's still three quotes, you gotta kind of sit down with a little group of people and analyze it and say, "Okay, this is why we're going with this group," and document all that stuff, because like I said, on the back end, that's where, where that stuff kicks in, and that, that, that is stuff, so...
You also have to do a cost analysis.
Cost analysis.
Before you, before you even start to bid, even though you don't know what the product's gonna cost, you have to do a cost analysis.
And some of it makes no sense, because some of the stuff we're looking at with services,
Yeah.
you can't really do it, you know, there's not really a way to do it. Again, that's back to those federal guidelines, that they tell you some of the stuff you gotta do, but then they don't really tell you the process to do it, and so, it's good. I can't, I can say this because the water's not here, it's written by a whole bunch of waters, I can tell you if you look at it. All right, any other questions about ESRA? All right, that's that. Back to CTE, you'll be following?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just wanted to give you a little update on CTE, because those of you that were around a couple years ago, CTE used to do a local plan every year, we still do a local plan every year, but they changed the process to where basically it's a two-year plan. You have to kind of update it, like this year, you guys voted to approve it, it didn't change any, it's just that it was the process to get the money released, but basically, this is a two-year local plan. We're on the second year of the last local plan that we did, but we gotta start writing a new one, because it'll be due in June. And basically, to do this, we have to gather a whole lot of information. We have to do a CLNA, a comprehensive local needs assessment, we did that last time. And basically, what we do is we send out a lot of surveys, we talk to a lot of people in focus groups, we look at our program data, we look at other data that's out there to see what we need to do to change things, to make things better, is it going okay? Like, obviously, giving an example, from the last one, we decided we needed to try to increase our CTSO, and we had a meeting today, and I told them, you know, we gotta add one this year, we gotta add a CTSO thing. Don't know what that is, that's like FFA? Used to have a bunch of them, right now, we got one, FFA. We also, with some of that stuff, we decide, we look at some things with special pops, and in other words, we put some things in place, action plans to improve where we saw weaknesses. Now, basically, this is also the time, if you wanna look at any kind of course pathway changes, because we did that last time, and that's when we brought in entrepreneurship, 1 and 2, that's when we changed to principals of business and finance, so we really changed the business program around a lot based on some of the data. So this is the time to look at that as well, and you gotta look at that stakeholder feedback, that's the surveys, the focus groups, course enrollment numbers, do we have good numbers? Will we have good enrollment in these courses? State and local, regional workforce data, and then personnel, do you have people that can teach it and can get licensed? And resources, do you have resources to do it? So all those things go into that. And here's just some data, this is the most current data we had. We have, I'll tell you, it's like I told those guys today, a lot of places struggle to get CTE enrollment, we don't. Part of that's, I won't say we're the only gang in town, but we're kind of the only gang in town, because we, you know, a lot of our kids use CTE for electives. Total duplicating count, and this is pretty much 6th through 12th grade, 1,544 enrollments. Now, that means that that could be a kid taking two or more CTE classes, that means that you have multiple enrollments. If you break that down, 6th to 8th grade, 588. 288 of those were male, 300 were female. 912, 956, 480 male, 476 female, so we're getting a good, one of the things they look at with CTE data, they, is basically, basically, are the girls and the guys taking CTE courses? Are they taking courses that are not, like, you have gals taking automotive courses, you have guys taking foods and nutrition, they look at that kind of stuff, that's part of the data we have to report. So we're in pretty good shape with that. Current course pathways, construction, automotive, the dope, digital design, animation, health science, business, foods and nutrition, and agriculture, those are our current pathways. If you don't know what a pathway is, basically, it's a sequence of two to three courses, and that's the thing, that's the big CTE thing right now, it always has been really, is to complete those pathways, and when they do complete it and are concentrated, that's the kids that take the work hits, and that's that ACT workforce development test that they take at the end of the year, and that's, we do pretty well on that as well. Staffing, CTE funds, and this changes from year to year, it's based on your ADM in 8th grade through 12th grade. Since I've been doing this, it has ranged from 107 months to 111 months of employment, and that's purely based on how many students you have in 8th through 12th grade, so you'd be able to rise in development. And we have 109 months this year, currently, we're at 132 months of employment with CTE teachers. So we're a little bit, state doesn't fund all of our teachers, we're forced to here because you guys support CTE, Dr. Beasley, I gotta get used to that, Dr. Beasley supports CTE, so we're in a good, good position with that. And basically, we pay these extra months of employment through other funding sources. We've got one that's a grant-funded position, the Middle Grade CDC. So, and 912, we have 11 positions, 68, we have three. So there's a little data on that. Next slide. Now, basically, you guys are stakeholders, so we're starting the process kind of with you. I will, I think some of you were here when I did this before, we sent out some surveys to you guys, and you answered surveys. This is also a chance for you to give me your thoughts and questions, and anything that you want to talk about, and what do you got for us?
We need more electives.
I agree.
We need to add more.
I agree.
I will say, and I told Mr. Carter, because I took Abby up there, and I've always had boys, so to me, it was easier to, those boys just, it was easy, but for her, being a girl was, you know, she wanted the foods and nutrition, that class, well, she actually got it, second semester, but it was cool.
Yeah.
That's, the girls like gravitate to that.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I got you. Yeah.
But I mean, she, you know, she took an AP class, and she's excited about that, but, you know, I wish we did have more things to offer, I really do.
Yeah, just in general, anything you want to look at, explore?
The construction part. I mean, I know we got the carpentry and stuff pretty well handled, we got electrical, HVAC, we've got plumbing, I mean, this county is screaming for masons, screaming for everybody.
Yeah.
We're gonna lose kids at Grayson because they do offer a big program.
They have a really big program.
They have a big program, and if we can't compete, it's gonna kill us.
They got 22 positions, I think.
Yes, and it's hard to compete.
22, and they have a whole school, they basically have a pretty good college.
But if we're not, I mean, they're just right across the line, I mean, five miles, so how do we compete with that? I mean, we gotta give everything we can. I know we got Wilkes Community College, and sometimes that's good, and sometimes that's bad, because it overlaps with some of our honors classes, it kills us. So we got to figure out how to make our honors and everything work together, if we have to make honors classes every period.
Yeah.
We gotta make it work together.
Talking about CTE?
I'm talking about honors, everything.
Oh, everything, I got you.
I'm talking about honors math, when you just have a third period, if you want weightlifting, if you want this or that, or you want sun at the Wilkes, you gotta choose, and either make it worse, a lot more.
And it's very appealing to some of those kids, and I'll be honest with the parents, and get those college credits.
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's money.
It is.
It's money in the bank, I mean, the higher GPA, the more money you're gonna get.
Absolutely. And you get those credits.
That's right.
Saves you money down the road.
Yep, so I mean, we need, we need to get that, so it's all working together.
I think anything we can get as a dual credit enrollment, which gives them the high school graduation requirement, also gives them that college credit, so that's a huge money save.
Yeah, and that's gotten tougher because...
That's where the kids going to college, but I don't want to take away from these kids that stay in here because these classes are overlapping and knocking each other out of the way, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
We gotta fix that.
And one of the dual enrollment, the social studies is gone because of the new, the way the state's doing things, so that's one of the blocks. Well, what I would do, and, you know, from what I'm hearing, and anybody else, tell me what you, we'll do a little research, and I'll get back with you, and I agree, but... And I agree, I think we need all those things. Again, it comes down to.
Fun.
Funding, can you find people and people.
And people.
And I'll be honest with you, if you start out, some of those, you're probably going to be looking at space too.
Yeah.
So that's going to be an issue too. But, yeah, we.
I mean, I know the electricity stuff are making more money than they ever have.
Yeah.
And it'd be hard to get one to come in here and teach, I know that.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
There is, but they will be that one, it's at the end of their time, they might be ready to teach.
Yeah. Well, I will look at it, and I'll do some research, and workforce data, you know, supports what you're saying. And we'll, we'll look and see what we can do and see what we can figure out.
One, one of the things we talked about the other day was maybe doing almost like an adjunct, that they would come in, do the first thing in the morning, do one class, like they did electrical one.
Right.
In the fall. Do it, do it first thing in the morning, then they can go on to work. And then next semester, do the two. Because like I said, the, the problem is going to be getting somebody making hundreds some thousand dollars to come in and.
It's like health science.
Make 30,000.
Sports, health science.
Yeah.
And there's, you know, there's a way to do it, and we can work on trying to figure out that, and again, that'll be finding the right person. And I will tell you, all those construction pathways that you're talking about are three-course pathways, that start with core, which we already teach, and then you got the one and a two.
Yep.
And so you're looking at, you know, depending on how you do it, we can get creative and try to get creative and do some of this adjunct. People are doing that now.
Yep.
But again, you still got to work on getting them licensed and all of that stuff.
Language is another place we need to look.
Yeah, we could use some. Our foreign language is packed up there.
Yes, we need another teaching.
She's, she's teaching during her planning period.
Yes.
Yeah. I talked to her the other day.
And we could use some electives that are not CTE.
Yes, no, I agree.
Bring back the old CSI.
Do some advanced PM, and there's all kinds of stuff, the old CSI course.
But again, it's a matter of finding people.
I know it's money.
Funding.
But we've got to be able to compete with our surroundings, because we can't lose kids to our surroundings.
I agree.
And we can't deny them the ability.
Well, I, I don't want them to just have taken something just to take it.
Right.
And not enjoy it.
Right.
I want them to be in that pathway because they're enjoying it or.
At CTE, I mean, most of those kids enjoy the CTE.
Yeah, right.
They like it. You have very few that don't like the, the courses they take.
Right.
And it's very beneficial, they get credentials, I mean, I'll be honest with you, we've got a lot of kids, Adobe, you mentioned that, we've had a ton of kids come out of Adobe and get jobs.
Yep.
With those credentials, so it's good. Any other questions about?
I just want to make a statement.
Yeah.
You know, you talked about the funding piece.
Yes.
You know, and we only get funded for our eighth grade through 12th grade students.
Yeah.
But we have to serve sixth and seventh graders, and now they're coming close to requiring us to serve fifth grader.
I have to do a fifth grade survey every year.
Yeah.
Right. And I have no issue with that, but they need to fund us.
I don't have, I don't have a issue with that, that's what I'm saying.
They need to fund us.
The state, state and federal government need to fund us for it.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, it's a big, hopefully with my future NC, they're going to expand some funding, but.
In the county we live in, I mean, they, they need to look at that too. They don't need to just base it on our admin. They need to base it on our needs.
I would suggest you start talking to.
Sarah Stevens, I know Dr. Stevens, but they don't do nothing.
They make all them good decisions. So I tell my brother when he's complaining about things, it's like, you need to run something.
There's too many of them.
Don't complain about it. Down there, they make decisions. Well, I will look at it, I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll get back maybe October, give me a, a couple of months to get sort of some stuff together, and we'll look at it and see what, you know, what it looks like and what it could be.
Yeah, I know what next something we can do tomorrow, but I'd like to be something we do in the next.
Well, and this is the time to do it, that's why we did this.
In the next few years, I'd like to see it built, start building up.
Yeah. Well, this is the year to really look at, because I'll, we'll have to put this plan in place, and it'll be the plan for two years. So, yeah. Any other questions?
I have heard people say, well, they took this class, they just really didn't have anything else to choose from, you know.
Oh, and, and that's.
I've got a question. Or schools around, some of them have virtual academies, virtual academies. Can our, can our kids take those?
Can kids enroll virtually?
In our surrounding.
I think they have to totally enroll in that whole school.
They have to go in the school, the whole school.
They have to leave the whole school.
Yeah, because they take the, they take the ADM, my.
They'll take it off.
They'll take it off.
Which is an issue too.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I just, I didn't know, I mean, because it's virtual, I didn't know if they could just sign up for that one class like they do the School of Math and Science, or Science and Math.
Well, the, the classes they go to on the virtual public schools.
They can do that.
They can do that.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and we keep.
But we keep them.
We enroll.
Right. And the School of Math and Science, we keep them enrolled.
Yes, correct.
And they have some electives that, but, but sometimes it overlaps and it gets full.
Any things?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
One last, one last thing on my report was just, I just want to give you a quick update on the remote students. We, we talked about that after our meeting last week. So currently, we only, we only have 14 students who have, their parents have requested to remain remote. We have five high school students, and we have 10 K8 students. We have two at Piney Creek and Athens Park. That's all we have right now. Stacy thinks she may get a couple more. We've, we've got some kids that we haven't, were students, I shouldn't call them kids, but students that we haven't located yet, that were remote last year, and we're, are reaching out, trying to contact those parents, and of course.
I know.
You know, it's hard, it's hard to find, numbers have changed, they've moved, but we, we may pick up a few more. Right now, 14, 14 students that we have remote, so we've got a good plan in place for that, and I think, I think it worked out fine.
So how many teachers do we have that's doing the remote?
So we're only going to need one teacher right now.
Just one?
Yeah. And that's to serve the K3.
Right.
And so right now, K3, we have four, five students. Yeah. So, yeah, what, what, what teacher can serve those?
How many kids can't, can't we find?
She had, I think she told me today, she had 15.
That were can't, can't find.
That were remote last year that.
No contact.
Well, she's, she's got teacher assistants and office personnel calling, trying to get numbers, get in touch with them.
What grade levels?
Um.
All, all, yeah. K8, K8.
It's crazy, man.
And that's an issue across the state.
It is, I mean, I've heard big numbers in other places, I just.
Yeah, our numbers are, are small compared to some places, they really are.
It's just hard to believe you lose a whole family.
Well, lots of families have moved.
Yeah, I know.
They just picked up.
With no contact, no nothing, just, don't tell nobody nothing.
No, no. But, like I said, we are making a tremendous effort to, to try to track them down.
And that's all, K8, you said?
Yes, yes, yeah.[1411.98]